Welcome to the August 28, 2017 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Combenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plourd?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here. We have the agenda. Before we make the motion, Commissioner Baldini?
I would like to move to amend the consent agenda by adding a public hearing for a proposed condominium subdivision plan for 401 Lakeshore Boulevard, 7L.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
I'll second.
Okay, we're gonna make that item 7L. Now, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I so move.
Commissioner Baldini moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Announcements? I do not have any at the moment. Boards and committees, we have two appointments. We have Timothy Tebby to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending We also have J. Matthew Tuccini to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an unexpired term ending 2/1/2020. Does that motion? Commissioner Plourd?
I move that we appoint Timothy Tebby to the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 5/30/20, and J. Matthew Tuccini, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, for an unexpired term ending 2/1/20.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Seconds.
Comments? See none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That also carries 7-0. We have three public hearings tonight. First public hearing is the Delph Project Community Development Block Grant, the closeout process. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, on October 2015, in October 2015, the city of Marquette received a community development block grant through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for a project to revitalize the Delph Theater building and create jobs. The grant was the amount of $481,000. The project has been successfully completed and resulted in 1.5 million in private equity for a total project investment of 1.981 million. Project produced a new business and 25 new jobs, included 20 full-time and five part-time positions. All grant funds have been expended, and the project is considered successful and has met the national objective of job creation. In order to formally close out the grant, community development block grant guidelines require that a public hearing be held. The city commission scheduled this public hearing during the August 14, 2017 meeting. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the closeout of the Delph Project Community Development Block Grant. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open this public hearing. This would be a chance, if any resident wishes to address the commission on this particular item, we would need your name, home address, city or township. You have three minutes at the front podium. Does anybody wish to address the commission on this item? Front, both, front?
I used to own that one.
Yeah. We juggle it up.
Okay. I'm Anna Lang, and I am the Executive Director for the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. And as the DDA, we applied for this community development block grant on behalf of the city. And I'm not gonna reiterate what Chris has already said, because it's on your agenda packet, but this project revitalized a landmark in our downtown. The Delph Building is a landmark building. It's a historic building. And for over 10 years, the city staff and DDA staff worked with the former owners of the building to try to get them to repair the marquee and to do some improvements to the Washington Street facade of the project unsuccessfully. In 2012, the Veers, Tom Veer and Jen Ray, purchased the building with the intent of turning it into an upscaled trendy restaurant, which they have done. I believe that the project has been very successful. As your cover says, the project just came in a little bit over $2 million, 481,000 of the CDBG grant funding, and it did create a significant number of jobs, 20 full-time, 5 part-time, and I think has really added to our downtown, to our city. And we thank them for taking the risk on this project. And I thank the city commission for allowing us, the DDA, to apply for that funding, and we hope to be able to continue that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Anyone? See none, we're gonna close this portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we approve the closeout of the Delph Project Community Development Block Grant as specified in the agenda attachment.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Discussion, is there any?
I just think it's, following up on Ms. Lang's comments, it is a tremendous, we've saved the marquee, which is becoming a real focal point in the downtown area, put in a real upscale restaurant, and it's attracting a great deal of attention and the number of jobs. And so, this is what the whole thing about the block grant was all about, it's state policy to help things do, and it worked. So, it's always good to look at something and say, yeah, it came off the way it was supposed to, so.
Mr. Frazier, anything?
I agree. Commissioner Baldini, fix it in an old theater and do an upscale restaurant, great idea and great thing for the city.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
That's what?
It's a resolution, is it, or not?
No. Next is.
Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. We come to our second public hearing, which is the Duke Life Point Marquette General Hospital amended Brownfield Plan. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background, Michigan Public Act 381 requires the governing body of a municipality to hold a public hearing for a Brownfield Plan or amendments to a Brownfield Plan under consideration of approval by the governing body, with notice of the public hearing and notice to taxing jurisdictions provided at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. The original Brownfield Plan for the DLP Market General Hospital was approved in October 2014 with Brownfield environmental eligible activities by DLP for redevelopment of the former Roundhouse property and Brownfield non-environmental eligible activities for site preparation and infrastructure improvement by DLP, as well as road improvements and relocation of the municipal service center by the city in cooperation with the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Bonds were issued by the MBRA for the Municipal Service Center in September 2016. Through the road improvement project design process, there were four factors which increased the budget for road improvements related to the DLP MGH. Improvements to the McClellan Avenue, Berega Avenue were required for regulatory approval, estimated cost $770,000. Wetstone Creek monitoring and maintenance was required for regulatory approval to monitor water levels, estimated cost $190,000. A contingency was recommended to be included to cover unforeseen circumstances, estimated cost $800,000, and inflationary cost increases from the original budget, estimated cost $682,650, approximately 7% over three years. A Brownfield Plan amendment is proposed for consideration by the city commission to amend the budget to provide for these unanticipated cost increases. The additional capital costs are $2,021,000. Additional interest costs are estimated at $1,180,049, and $10,000 is estimated for Brownfield Plan work plan development and approval, for a total increase of $3,211,049. The amended Brownfield Plan proposes to reduce the estimated capture for the local Brownfield Revolving Fund in the equivalent amount necessary to provide for these increased road improvement costs. As a result, there is no net impact to taxing jurisdictions. There will still be more than adequate revenues for the local Brownfield Revolving Fund, estimated at over 12 million. The proposed budget amendment is a worst-case scenario. There are actions that will be pursued to lower the projected cost, including a real allocation from the DLP budget balance described in a subsequent city commission action to amend the Brownfield reimbursement agreement, state grants from McClellan Avenue, lower anticipated interest costs for the road bond, and limited requirement for contingency that would bring the projected cost increase to approximately 1.1 million. While these cost increases will be allocated to local tax capture, the final approval for state tax capture from the Michigan Strategic Fund was greater than the more conservative estimate included in the original Brownfield Plan. As a result, there is no net effect on the length of capture for local taxes. The amended Brownfield Plan has been prepared and approved by the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at a regular meeting on July 27, 2017. This public hearing was scheduled at the August 14, 2017, regular meeting to be held tonight, and notices to taxing jurisdictions were provided as required by Act 381. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt the attached resolution to approve the amended Brownfield Plan for the DLP Market General Hospital project. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, before we open this up for public hearing, would the city manager have something to add?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As it's stated in the background here, we ran into, run into some additional costs with our road project related to the new hospital construction. I've been informing the commission about this for a few months now, as we anticipated this action having to take place now. I think it's well explained in the document, however, Mac McCollum is here, and he has a short presentation that I'd like to provide to the city commission as background for this, with your permission. Okay? Mac, thanks.
Can I do it here? I got the presentation, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah.
If you're gonna limit me to three minutes, I got two hours, so. Thank you, it's great to be with you again, and crystal all my thunder, basically, so. I'll try and be brief in going through some of these items and be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, this is for the DLP Market General Replacement Hospital. You may have heard of it. It's been in all the papers. The development of the new hospital was part of the project that was developed with a 516-square-foot hospital, 160,000 square feet of medical office building and parking deck as well. The minimum estimated investment is 170 million. We expect and anticipate that that investment will be even higher, and therefore that the taxes raised will be higher, the payoff will be much quicker. But an important part of that was relocating the municipal services center. And with the grand opening, have a fantastic new facility, and wonderfully, this is an opportunity to use Brownfield funding for that. It's a kind of a little quirk in the law that allows relocation of public facilities for economic development. So, it was a great opportunity to help finance the relocation of municipal services center. Lots of environmental relocation, site preparation, and infrastructure expenses. And again, the increased value, this property was valued at zero, it was public property prior to that, the increased value in investment will raise the taxes generated, and to pay for these extraordinary costs will capture those taxes and refund and repay those extraordinary costs. When those extraordinary costs are paid off, all of those taxes remain and go on to the taxing jurisdictions. As Chris mentioned, the Brownfield Plan was approved in 2014. We did get municipal street, excuse me, Michigan Strategic Fund approval in February 2015 for the non-environmental components and from MDEQ for the environmental components in October of 2015. Important to get that state tax capture approval, it's about half, 45% or so of the available funding, so in essence, we're getting a 45% state grant over time from this. It's provided, all of those approvals provided all of the approvals necessary for the tax financing capture, and the eligible activity budget at that time was $39.2 million, plus interest, planned development, administrative costs, and the allocation to the local Brownfield Fund. This is a budget breakdown. DLP had $4 million estimated in environmental costs, $6 million in non-environmental costs, and so their allocation was $10 million. The relocation of the public facility was budgeted at 18 million with road improvements at 11.2 million, so city allocation of 29.2 for that total of 39.2 million. Interest is in eligible activity as well as work plan development, administrative and operating costs, and that was an allocation the law allows for capture of up to five years into a local Brownfield Fund to be able to help finance and redevelop other properties throughout the city. As was mentioned, the reason for the amendment, the original budget at 11.2, there were some additional costs that were identified. Chris went through those, and those are in your packet. Through the NEPA National Environmental Protection Act process and environmental assessment process, it was identified that a couple of matters needed to be addressed in this to create the whole project, and that was improvements to the McClellan Avenue and Berega Avenue street intersection, Berega Street Intersection, monitoring system for Wetstone Creek water levels. There was also in there, as time went on, and looked at all of the cost factors that were involved, the recommended contingency for 800,000, the inflationary cost increase in bond issuance costs there. So, the approach that has been taken here with this amended budget is really a line-item adjustment. It reduces the amount of allocation from the local Brownfield Fund by approximately 3 million, transfers that budget line item over to the capital budget and road improvements there, so there's no net impact, taxing jurisdictions, the Brownfield Plan total amount remains the same. It is local capture only for both of those items. And in, just in one way, the state tax capture, we took a conservative approach in the state tax capture. Because of some of the other items within that, we ended up getting approval for a little bit higher amount than what was included in the Brownfield Plan, quite a bit higher amount than what was in the Brownfield Plan. And so, in effect, the number of years that it takes off to pay these additional local taxes still remain the same, because we received a higher allocation than originally anticipated in the Brownfield Plan. So, again, as a result, there's no net increase. I won't go through this, but it's included within your packets there of the specific items. I think we've kind of run through that, show a little bit of the allocations there as well. The next slide shows the allocations between DLP and the city and Brownfield Authority for those eligible activity costs. And then the final sheet, this is again the original budget that was included in the packet. The revisions, a total of $2,021,000 in those costs, again, anticipated interest costs, my exorbitant fees for putting together the plan, and so eligible activity total of approximately 3.2 million. And again, the Brownfield allocation, local Brownfield Fund was reduced in that amount, so the balance is the same. For the approvals, as was mentioned, Act 381 requires the approval of a Brownfield Plan by the Brownfield Authority or an amendment by the Brownfield Authority and the governing body. The governing body has to hold a public hearing and approve the Brownfield Plan, holding the public hearing tonight, considering the Brownfield Plan. No additional state taxes are being requested, so there's no additional state approvals that are necessary in this case. The Brownfield Authority approved the plan on July 27. The city commission set the hearing on August 14, and we're here tonight with a public hearing in consideration of the Brownfield Plan amendment. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Before you leave, if we have to call you up later, we will do that, if we have questions.
Okay.
City Manager, first, did you have a question?
I don't have a question, but just, Mac can support me on this, but what's being presented to you now is the worst-case scenario. In other words, if we need, if we have to spend all the money, this is the maximum amount we need. However, as mentioned in the background, there's a couple different avenues we're seeking to reduce that 3.2 million. One that I think is worth noting is that Duke Life Point has agreed to, at least in principle for now, to transfer part of their unused non-environmental funds from the original Brownfield Plan in the amount of, in the area between 400 and 500,000 dollars to help us offset this 3.2 million. So, I feel comfortable that that's gonna happen. As a matter of fact, the city attorney is working with their attorney now to amend the development plan to include that transfer, so we are working in that direction. The other things we're seeking are maybe see if there's some grant funding that might be available for the McClellan project. You know, and the contingency that's there, the 800,000, is something that is there as an emergency, and it, you know, we'll do our best not to, hopefully not to spend that full amount, so that might also be a savings to this overall project.
I'd like to add two things, if I could, from a conversation that we had with DLP this morning as well. We were talking about the amendment to the reimbursement agreement, which will be coming back to you hopefully next month, to go through and discuss to provide for that reallocation. They had two comments on the Brownfield Plan itself, and one was to add a clarification statement with respect on how the school taxes work. And again, those taxes are captured as well. The school operating taxes were subject to the PA 255 tax abatement, the 50% tax abatement. But however, there's no impact to Marquette area public schools because of the foundation grants, and how that works, those dollars are allocated to Marquette public schools. The state makes up the difference for the school aid formula, and so there's no impact from this project on Marquette public schools. They're very sensitive to that and wanted to see if we could, you know, add a statement to that effect. The other component was, we did note in the Brownfield Plan the potential arrangement for the Beacon House to be on that site. There's really no impact on it, but we wanted to mention that. They haven't come to agreement yet with Beacon House and thought it might be a little bit premature to include that within the Brownfield Plan. They certainly intend to do that and all that, so they requested that that be removed. There's really no impact on the project. That was land that was going to be not developed anyway. The land, it will be a land lease, it will remain in private ownership by DLP, and so the taxes generated from that land will be the same, so there's no impact on the Brownfield Plan. It's not necessary to be included in the Brownfield Plan, and I think it's appropriate to respect that, that they haven't come to an agreement yet, and it's probably premature to include it within here. So, the final version, if it's acceptable to the commission, would again add that statement on the no impact to Marquette area public schools and take out the reference to the Beacon House.
And Mac, is it safe to say there will be no further loss of taxes for the city of Marquette, because this money is gonna be coming from the revolving fund?
Yes, the total amount is the same from the original Brownfield Plan to the new Brownfield Plan. And as a matter of fact, before we got, because we got a few more state dollars than was anticipated in the original Brownfield Plan, the allocation will actually be a little bit less than originally thought for the city and the other local taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else have a question at this point? None? Okay, Mac, hey, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna open the public hearing. Time for residents to may address the commission on this item. If you wish to address us, talk to us, now is your time, you got three minutes. Just give us your name, address, city or township.
At this, we're opening a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point? Anyone?
Frank Schaverdo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Except for those who are scholars on the hospital background, the cover sheet is very confusing. It states that $800,000 was included to cover unforeseen circumstances, however, this is nearly enough to cover what appear to be oversights. Surely, we knew ahead of time that improvements were needed for the Berega-McLellan intersection, even those of the most rudimentary knowledge realized well ahead of the decision that a road this close to a major hospital would be impacted. This expense was foreseeable and needed to be passed on to the hospital before approving the location. If the hospital won't pay, obtain the funds from the seven who sat on this board. It's fitting that this board apparently neglected to account for the monitoring of Wetstone Creek, because the environment is an inconvenience to our members. But to those who care about nature, there was an obvious need to monitor those water levels and to assure proper containment as well. How could they allegedly not have been aware of the NEPA protocol with all the exposed dirt involved with building a roundabout and burying infrastructure so nearby? Again, this cannot be paid with the $800,000 when this expense was foreseeable. $800,000 is $800,000 regardless of where the money came from. It's also evident that inflationary costs would rise over this period. July 7, Mr. Plourd reminded us of how costs can increase by the moment, much less over the course of the years we knew this process would take. Too bad Mr. Plourd wasn't on this board yet, because he'd have warned us prior to the vote. Regardless, the expertise on this board and on city staff ought to have averted these unforeseen amendments and have passed them on to the hospital as part of the agreement. They'd likely have paid the extra millions. Let them pay, because it created the situation, or they created the situation, as with the help of a commission, it bent over backward to accommodate the hospital's every beck and call. Ms. Compenzi warned that this agreement wasn't what it appeared to be, but most members don't take their own peer any more seriously than they do our citizens. To say these expenses are unanticipated seems deceptive. Please use the correct wording. Oversight is more accurate than unanticipated and unforeseen. So, this must mean that the $800,000 cannot be used, because all three of the items appear foreseen. Of course, we're lacking too much information to say for certain, hence the gentleness of this comment.
Would anyone else like to address the commission? Anyone else? See none, we're gonna close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to accept the attached resolution to approve the amended Brownfield Plan for the DLP Market General Hospital project.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plourd?
I second.
Comments, any? Commissioner Frazier?
Another step in the big hospital project.
Commissioner Plourd?
Just to point out to a few people who may not understand this, but unforeseen means you can't see it, can't predict the future. That's what this is about.
Commissioner Baldini?
I have a couple of comments. If you look at this package, it's $3 million, 3,100,000. Two of those items, unforeseen, the McClellan Avenue, if you recall, we've had this discussion with the city manager, that the state mandated us to do some extra things to the tune of $700,000. On the Wetstone Creek, I know our staff looked at it, we thought we had a go, they came back and they said they wanted more. And they're at a point where they can control all of the applications and hold everything up if you don't play their game. So, 960,000 of that is right there. A contingency of 800,000 on a project of this size is not a lot. I think we've all been involved in projects where you always build in a contingency. I know even on our service center, we had a contingency fund, which we ended up using a couple of times, and you do that. And the, and if you also look at it, you had $420,000. As I said, when I come back in my next life, I'm gonna come back and train as bond counsel, because that's the fee we have to pay to go out and sell bonds on this. Okay, that's part of doing business. So, I don't mean to make light of $3 million, I could, you know, live on that, but at the same time, the way it was explained to us also, it doesn't skew the numbers, and it still keeps us on track to get this project done for this area. It's also was noted that the taxes for the school are paid for by the state. So, this is really not just a local project, it's also a state and a local project. And the schools are being held harmless, and the state- And the schools are being held harmless, and the state wanting to encourage communities to do projects of this nature came up with the Brownfield concept and also with the block grant that we mentioned earlier. But at the same time, they did not want to penalize the market public schools, and I believe the ISD also is protected in this. I, and I'll stand corrected on that if I'm, but I think all schools are. So this, I think the 800,000 dollar contingency, and, and I know that the city manager has been talking to the DLP folks about transferring some other money, so this fund actually, the amount that we're gonna be requesting here, actually we may not have to use it for these purposes, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to go along with that, it should be also mentioned that Duke LifePoint is well aware of the situation, and they are in discussion with us to take up, take over some of the, some of the cost of this. They know, they know business and they understand that we, we got hit with some state mandates that no one could foresee. The other thing that I think that should be pointed out is that the city government, city staff, and Duke LifePoint, and the state of Michigan are in a lot of different talks and conversations to try to reduce the cost of this to as far down as it can possibly be. And I have a lot of faith in city staff. They're outstanding negotiators. If there's any way that they can take one more penny off of the cost of this particular issue, they'll find it and they'll do it. So they're gonna make sure that this, this, this situation here costs as least as possible. And I have a lot of confidence that the city staff are gonna do that, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campenzi?
I ask staff, I know we had some cost overruns with the service center, the salt barn, stuff like that. Where, where is that money coming from, or is that just general funds or bonds or?
All of that came from the sale money, from selling that property at Duke LifePoint. Much of it was used up, much of that sale money was used up in purchase of property related to the new service center that, and then the salt barn came out of the sale money, which was 4 million to begin with, as well as some of the other expenses that were additional.
Do we know anymore about the, the armory or, or what that might look like? Cause I know if, if we can't kind of solidify that, then we owe Northern some money?
Yeah, we, part of that sale agreement with the university for their parking lot north of Wright Street was that we would set aside 600,000 dollars, which did come from the sale money, to be available should the university ever be put in a position or, or get to a position of actually purchasing the armory or the armory property. That amount grows smaller after two years if the university doesn't make any headway in that regard. So we have that in reserve now, the 600,000. I think it might go down to 400 or less after two years, which would have been May, a year from May would be the two years, so that's still in reserve.
I guess I'd just like to thank staff for having a detailed handout of the costs. I think it's important for people to see just what Duke LifePoint will be paying out of the MSF eligible activities as well as the city. You know, I've, I've been strongly outspoken about the fact that the city is taking the majority of the debt in this project. And with DLP only taking 6 million dollars for their part in this, the city has taken 29.2 million. If you add the interest to Duke LifePoint, 6 million, it comes up to 9.5 million. When you add the city's interest over 20 years, 17 million, a little over that, to the 29.2 million, the city residents are responsible for 46, almost 46.5 million dollars of this project. And again, if everything works out right over 20 years and healthcare doesn't change and we still have the same hospital, we'll be okay. But I can tell you that the biggest thing right now that I'm hearing from the community is that they're worried about what's happening with healthcare and where it's going, and if it will stay in the private market, or if we will move to something such as a single payer system. So again, a lot of risk. I think this points out what I've been saying for many years, just that we didn't negotiate a very fair deal for the taxpayers going into this.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. This requires a roll call vote because it is a resolution. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campenzi?
No.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campena?
Yes. It carries 6-1. Now we come to our third and final public hearing for the evening, which is a proposed condominium subdivision plan. City clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Background, Melda Properties LLC is requesting the establishment of a condominium subdivision to be called Condominiums at the Tressle Building, and is proposed to have four individual units, one commercial and three residential apartments, with common ownership in the land, structural part of the building, roof and utilities servicing the building located at 215 South Front Street. The subdivision ordinance specifies a two-phase plan approval process, the preliminary and final plans, and each phase must go to both the planning commission and the city commission for approval for section six and seven of the subdivision ordinance. On May 2nd, 2017, the planning commission reviewed the preliminary plan, held a public hearing and passed the following motion. It was moved by P. Shogo, seconded by J. Carlson, and carried 5 to 0 that after review of the site plan condominium for the condominiums at the Tressle Building and the final, and the staff file review analysis for O1, CSD 0517, also O5 SPR 0517, the planning commission finds substantial compliance with the city of Marquette subdivision and zoning ordinance and hereby recommends that the city commission approves the site plan with the following condition, that an amended site plan is submitted to meet staff comments, and only after staff verifies that the revised plan meets staff comments, will staff advance the site plan to the commission for their review. The plan is now being forwarded to the city commission for approval by the governing body. Approval of the preliminary condominium subdivision plan confers upon the developer the right to prepare a condominium master deed and a file, and a final plan for the project. Fiscal effect, there may be minor change to the taxable value of the property. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and approve the condominium subdivision plan. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open this public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the commission on this item, now is your time. At the front podium, you got three minutes. Name, address, city or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission? Anybody? See none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we approve the condominium subdivision plan.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Plord?
No, it's pretty clear in the information that's given.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, it's pretty clear. We're changing, and they're asking to be changed from apartments to condos, and it's essentially the wine bar building on top, so yeah, nothing really further.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else? Okay, see none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Tonight we have two presentations. Our first presentation is gonna be the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We have Chairman Walt Lindela here. Walt, do you wanna lead us on this?
See, we have our previous one up here, so I need to escape out of that, I guess. Working to get the full screen here. I am usually fairly technically savvy, but I seem to get thrown off here all the time, Okay. My name is Walt Lindela. I am the chair of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for the city of Marquette. I appreciate the commission and our other presenters this evening giving me the opportunity to go first, as I am a man of many hats and I'll be leaving here to go work on stuff preparing for the Blues Fest this weekend in Marquette, as I am the festival director for that. And my phone hasn't stopped ringing basically for the last 24 hours and it's only going to get worse. But that is one of the things that I, I like to talk about through the context of arts and culture and the arts and culture division here with the city of Marquette. We have a, a purpose and mission that is to advise the city commission in its effort to support, facilitate and grow as an empowered and vital arts, cultural and creative community in the city of Marquette. There are a group of us that do this, and as you can see from this lovely selection of photos, we have eight members on our commission currently, or on our committee currently, your chair, as well as Rusty Bowers, also Diane Magnuson is there, also Claire Moore, and also our friend Michael Reed, Christine Granger, Liz Beckman and Doreen Friend. And actually, several of them are here this evening to show their support, so we appreciate them stopping by, so that nice little group over there is on this committee. What we do is we are an arts advocacy and community engagement group. We try to plan and help with economic development, as well as grant administration, place making and special events, and public art in the city. Now with that, with the arts advocacy and community engagement, we work to provide resources and support to services for over 55 artists and arts and cultural organizations in our area. Grant consultation and grant writing, as well as state and federal funding opportunities, exhibiting and teaching are all covered in that effort to support that, as well as professional development for artists and cultural leaders in the community. Administrative and promotional support with events and activities, a meeting space and technical assistance through the Arts and Culture Center in the basement of the Peter White Public Library. We also like to bring forth events that, to help network artists and other creatives together, and also do a lot of senior arts activities programming at the Arts and Culture Advisory Center. Some photos here for you include some recent events, including the, the Ferry Garden Festival and the Fresh Coast, uh, Fresh Coast plein air painting festival that was held in Marquette. Very popular, surprisingly popular. We expected them to be good, but we did not expect them to turn out as well as they did, and it was great. It was an opportunity for folks to come out and experience and take part in and create some art in Marquette, which is always, well, they do call it a cool city, so it is cool. Planning and economic development is a major part of what we talk about in our committee meetings, because we are all about making sure that there's an understanding that arts and cultural programming in the city of Marquette has a definite economic impact on this community. And we've been working to build several private and public partnerships that fulfill components of the 2014 master plan that was approved by the commission, and strengthen the role of arts, culture and the creative sector within our community. There are some of the agencies there that we've been working with, including the Lake Superior Community Partnership, the Watershed Partnership, Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, Marquette Chamber of Commerce, Northern Michigan University, Peter White Public Library, Michigan Film and Digital Media Office, just to name a few. Excuse me, one of the things that we are the most proud of is what's called the Upper Peninsula Arts and Culture Alliance. And that was an effort that we led with strategic planning efforts with arts leaders and allies in tourism, as well as recreation, local and regional government, and planning and economic development officials in the creation of a formal organizational alliance. It's to connect people, ideas and resources toward fostering and promoting creativity in the Upper Peninsula. Marquette has become the leader of this effort. Many communities across the Upper Peninsula and Northern Lower Michigan look to Marquette for its leadership with its arts and cultural programming, and we are looking to continue and develop and foster a stronger alliance across the Upper Peninsula with the support of the commission. Also, we've been working with the Peter White Public Library with their space and strategic plan, because as you know, as I mentioned, the Arts and Culture Center is located in the basement of the Peter White Public Library. They are in the process of upgrading and making their space better, and we've been involved in those conversations to have an improved workshop, as well as exhibit and meeting spaces, provide a stronger partnership between the library and the arts and culture division, and also ensure that there's an integration of the arts in all future library programming. So far, so good, as that bond was passed by voters recently, and it allows that project to move forward, so there will be some changes at the library soon, and that includes changes at the Marquette Arts and Culture Center. Marquette Chamber of Commerce, we've also been working with, with something that's called Evolve Marquette, that's just rolling out into the community. It is an assembly of creatives that is powered by the Marquette Chamber in support of creative industries in Marquette, and those who are considering making the city of Marquette their home in the future. Now, we've assisted in planning, as well as development and funding of the program, and we serve on the Evolve Marquette Committee. I am on it, and Tina Harris is on it. And we serve on the Evolve Marquette Creative Residency Committee, which is looking to establish a creative residency program within the city of Marquette. One of the locations that have been discussed for possible use for a residency would be some of the buildings at the, the Lighthouse property, which would give it a, a very, a very unique position in the community. Also, the Marquette 365 Community Calendar, which we know that the city has also invested in, helped establish this in partnership with the chamber, because out of our very successful master planning process that we did a few years ago, that was the number one thing that came out of it for us as a committee, that people wanted a one-stop-shop for a calendar to find out what's going on. And Marquette 365 now is in existence, and it is there, and I know the city's using it on their new website. Also did training sessions within the arts and culture community, and we will continue to advocate and train the community to use that calendar. Public art is also something that you're hearing about right now in discussions, not only with the policy here with the city, but also you're seeing some of it out there. The public art policy is currently in discussions with the city, and it was assembled by the 11-member public art, public art task force, which the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee helped with that, and the, the division did as well. And it is delivering a public art policy to the city that I know you will be discussing here very soon in the next couple of meetings. Also, the Father Marquette Improvement Project, which is being discussed, I know, on this evening's agenda, helped to assist in securing funds for the park's public art components. We worked with partners and local artists to develop public art goals within the park, developed and wrote the artist requests for qualifications, and also worked with developing the process of getting the artists that will be doing that, and developed the public art contract. I know tonight you'll be voting on the selection of the artists to do this project, but this is a good example of some of the changes that have happened with the arts and, arts and culture within the city. Also coming out of that master planning process was a desire to have the Arts and Culture Office be more of a facilitator for administrative matters, some training matters, taking care of things like this. This is one of those examples of how that has come to be with helping more with creating the ability, or helping the ability for artists to get involved with major municipal projects, as opposed to necessarily being a programming or an activity center. Grants and administration, also a program grant for creative community services. This provides affordable creative space for the community. A capital grant for the Presquale Park benches, and grant writing assistance, which has been very helpful with agencies through the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs. The operations grant for the Lake Superior Art Association, mini grants in partnership with the DDA for the annual Halloween spectacle. Also a program grant with QPAD for their UP Alliance website, and the Michigan Film and Digital Media Office Creative Chamber Grant, which you are seeing some of the residuals of that right now with ampersand popping up in downtown Marquette. You heard about it in the news today. Some of the special events that we have are the annual art awards, the holiday art sale, the Fresh Coast plein air painting festival, the Halloween spectacle, Art Week in the city, which was a big hit this year, and the rotating monthly exhibits at the gallery at the library. For 2018 and beyond, we are hoping- For 2018 and beyond, we are hoping to establish and administer the public art policy, if approved by the Commission. Assist with public art components of the Father Marquette Improvement Project. Also lead the continued development of the UP Arts and Cultural Alliance. Measure the economic value of Marquette's creative enterprise industries, which we feel is very important to be able to put a dollar sign or a dollar value on what this brings to our community. Also work to assist in the creative reuse of the Lighthouse property and identify funding for that. Work to establish a creative residency in Marquette. Assist with the development and coordination of Marquette's first Bach Festival. That's right, and that's just going to be blues and that kind of thing. There'll be more. And create alliances with NMU to fully open their arts programming to residents. We're looking to build a stronger relationship with Northern Michigan University, with the City. I've definitely been an advocate of that for many years. And review zoning and other regulations to identify barriers to any artistic and creative enterprise development. Sounds like a lot. It is. I do thank the Committee for being a part of it, and Tina and her staff, and the continued support of the Commission. And I have, I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, not any questions, Walt. Just one, thank you. Two, as a Chamber Board member, I love every single thing that comes out of Evolve Marquette. You guys have done great work in helping that happen, and I really look forward to the creative residency program and seeing what comes out of that. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Should we approve the permit for the Blues Fest this weekend? What do you think?
I was going to bring that up, but I do see it's in the consent agenda, so I'm hoping it gets through, yes.
I think, I think because you're here, we'll approve it just because you're here.
Thank you. I appreciate that greatly. I'll tell the Committee here in just a moment when I head over there.
Commissioner Conley?
Thanks for the work you and your Committee does for the community. It's not just thinking of a piece of art. It's the events that are becoming increasingly important to our community and are part of our economic development. It helps attract visitors, and it helps attract people who want to live here, inside the City of Marquette. So, thanks for your work. It really is, it's part of economic development, too, which we're all in favor of. I'd like to say, I'm kind of excited about the artists and residents. I think offering a piece of the, a spot in the Coast Guard property will make it very attractive, and I think people will just be rolling over themselves to get into that program. And I think it'll produce work that will be of lasting value to the community. I think we'll all be able to look back and say, oh yeah, that was in, you know, 2019. The artist brought this work, whether it is a performance, or, or display art, or, or anything, that that will create a legacy, we'll be able to look back on. I think back on other pieces of like public art, the chairs. Anyone who's been around remembers the chairs, and, and that. And so I think it's going to be like that, but on an ongoing basis. So, again, thank you for the work that you do. I hope to further this along as we go forward with our public art policy. Thank you.
Well, Walt, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. The arts and culture is a very important part of the City. They do a lot for the City. You got an energetic group, active group, and as I said before, you do a lot for the City, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll just leave you with the thought that, you know, we work to try to make sure that arts and cultural programming activities are a major part of Marquette, and we will keep working to help the Commission in any way with keeping that going and making it stronger.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I must.
Okay, our second presentation of the evening is the Michigan Farmers Market Association. We have Michelle Gagliardi and Myra Zibert here. Myra, are you going to start for us?
Myra Zibert, I'm manager of the Downtown Marquette Farmers Market, which comes out of the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. So, thank you for taking the time for us to be here tonight. Appreciate the Commission's work. And what we have to say tonight, I think dovetails very nicely with what Walt presented in terms of the benefit and culture of the town. The Farmers Market is an ongoing event through the summer and late into the fall. That also brings economic impact to the, to the area. It's a place where people, citizens gather and tourists like to visit as well. It's also a place where the artist, as an independent business owner, has a place on a weekly basis to show what they have. I want to give just brief specifics about our market, and then Michelle will talk about the, the results of the 2016 Economic Impact Study. So, I think in one way, we benefit from our partnership with the Michigan Farmers Market Association to have, to be developing tools to assess the economic impact of that. We're very grateful for their work and partnership with that. Briefly, the Downtown Marquette Farmers Market has, we have 80 vendors this year. We have room for about 57 each week, that I work hard to make sure that we have that many there. Each of the seasoned vendors pays $150 to have a permanent spot at the market for the season. And then we have room for daily vendors that rotate through, that adds variety, and they pay $10 a week to be there. The combination of those two vendor fees cover approximately 25% of the market cost. Market runs outdoors for 24 weeks and indoors in the late fall for seven weeks, so we have a total of 31 weeks. We have access to local fresh food and also to the artistic talents in the area. We have, again, through this Economic Impact Study, been able to have more accurate counts and estimate between 20 and 2,500 people a week come through the market, with an estimated daily market sales coming close to 30,000 a week, and season sales coming close to 700,000. We do participate in a number of food assistance programs in an effort to make what's available accessible to all income levels. And the combination of the five programs, we have about $25,000 then that are available to area residents to access food. We are coming to the end of a two-year United States Department of Agricultural Farmers Market Promotion Program grant that we received just over $70,000. So that's helped with promoting the market and adding some nice elements to it. I am full-time with the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, 75% of my time dedicated to the market, and we do hire two seasonal cashiers to help implement on the day. The difference of, from the vendor fees then is made up in excess of $30,000 a year from the budget of the Downtown Development Authority. So, those are some of the specifics then of our market. And then Michelle Gagliardi from the Michigan Farmers Market Association will have the presentation on the 2016 Economic Impact.
Okay. Okay. As Myra said, my name is Michelle Gagliardi, and I am the Special Projects Associate with the Michigan Farmers Market Association. And I'm presenting on the Downtown Marquette Farmers Market Impacts of 2016. So, a little bit about the association. If you've never heard of us, we are a statewide, member-based nonprofit that works to advance farmers markets to create a thriving marketplace for local food and farm products, with a vision of placing farmers markets at the forefront of the local food movement and working to ensure that all residents have access to healthy, locally grown food. So, the project centered around measuring economic contribution. The net economic impact of Michigan farmers markets is unknown, and Michigan communities are not using a standardized, a standardized method of collecting data around those impacts. So, the interest in shared measurement at a state level was really important to help inform and promote an advocacy for farmers markets. So, a little introduction to go off of what Myra said about the Downtown Marquette Farmers Market. This study was, this market was one of six markets in a study that had, that included Marquette, Menominee, Port Huron, Traverse City, and Munnising. Two markets in Menominee participated. That's why it says six markets in five communities. And it was funded through a USDA Rural Business Development Grant to assess the economic impact of Michigan farmers markets throughout the 2016 market season. The benefit to participating communities by giving markets data to inform future decisions about expansion, the additional enhancement of facilities, and job creation. So, tools used in this project, there were a lot of components to measuring economic contribution of a farmer's market. There's a market profile, so pretty much the information that Myra gave is what we worked off as a starting point, just a little bit about the market as a whole. Each vendor that participated in all the markets filled out a vendor profile. A vendor weekly sales slip was collected. Visitor counts were logged twice, once a month throughout the season. And then, all of this information was housed into very large, very confusing Microsoft Excel workbooks. One was master data entry, and one held all the sales for each week. And then visitor and customer surveys were distributed in each market. And then there was a year-end vendor survey to sum everything up. So, the Downtown Marquette Market runs on Saturdays, May to December, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Marquette Commons, 29 markets about throughout the year. On average, about 30 vendors in 2016, a little more this year, Myra said. And then, average number of visitors based on visitor counts was about 1,645. And if anyone knows anything about farmers markets, they're basically a bank on the back end. Like Myra said, there's five different food assistance programs running through the farmers market, as well as cash and credit and debit sales. So, a little bit about the vendor mix. The total number of vendors throughout the season is 86. Total number of individuals employed through vendor businesses is 167. 130 of those are year-round employees, and 37 are seasonal. Average number of miles vendors are traveling to the farmers market is 25. That's a really good number. That means that the food is coming from less than 30 miles away. Average number of SNAP-eligible products per market day is about 50. And then to the left, you can see that the majority of the products being sold at the market are value-added food, produce, or crafts and services. So, a little more about the vendor mix. About 10% are vendor businesses owned by individuals under the age of 35. 13 of the farmer vendors have fewer than 10 years of experience, and 7% of them are organic certified. Total acres owned or leased by farmer vendors, 1,795 acres are owned for, are in production for farm, or in production farmland. About 1,200 owned and about 567 leased. So, this is a vendor map. This is showing the address each vendor is coming from to the market. So, it shows how close people are traveling, and how local the food really is. This really helped me see how farmers markets really bring, like, local food to one place once a week. So, a little bit about the visitor makeup. 67% of 237 visitors who were surveyed came from the Marquette zip code. The remaining 79 visitors came from 33 different zip codes around the country. So, that showed, we measure economic impact based on new dollars coming into a community. Anything that is spent by a resident of the community is just money circulating through, and economic impact is measured by unique dollars coming in. So, showing that 79 visitors of 237 were coming from outside of Marquette shows that new dollars are coming in. So, 73% of those surveyed came from the, to the area specifically for the farmers market. And of those 68, of those surveyed, 68% plan to do additional shopping, eating, or other activities in the area. So, that shows a little more about the economic contribution, is that if people are coming to the area just for the market, they're more than likely going to spend money in other areas of the community. And an estimated annual visitor count of about 47,645 people. A little more about the customers. 87% of visitors surveyed used a personal vehicle to travel to the farmers market. 67% purchased produce, 35% prepared foods, and 27 purchased plants or flowers. And 41% of customers surveyed shopped frequently, which was categorized as weekly or more. So, it's a regular thing to do, is to go down to the farmers market. And to the left, it shows the other frequencies we measured. This map shows where visitors were coming from based on their zip code. Two from California, and a good handful from outside of the state as a whole. But as you can see, most of them are coming from in and around Marquette. But this is one of my favorite visuals of the presentation, because it really shows the reach of local farmers market. So, sales. Average total purchase amount per customer is around $22. And the estimated total annual sales reported by customers was about a million and a half. And then the estimated reported by vendors is about 834,000. So, as you can see, there's a big difference between what customers reported spending and what vendors reported selling. And so, the way economic impact is measured is kind of in a triangle. And so, two of those pieces are vendors' sales and customers' spending. And we take it with a grain of salt, because customers tend to over-report on what they spent at a market, and vendors tend to heavily under-report what they make in sales. So, we like to think that somewhere in between there, we can find the actual sales of a market. So, we report on both customer spending and vendor sales. 65% of the total sales done by vendors is done in cash, 30% in credit, and 5% was SNAP sales, with over 436 SNAP transactions done in 2016. So, moving forward. Challenges with this process of collecting data was, it was confusing. The reporting requirements weren't as clear as they should have been. Housing all of the information into Microsoft Excel workbooks was not a great plan either. Availability, investment of staff, and time to gather all of this data, and cooperation from vendors is always a challenge. So, we identified a need to become more efficient and streamline the data collection process and the tools that are used for market managers to collect all of this data. That led us to partner with the Michigan, or, no, Michigan, the Farmers Market Coalition, which is a national nonprofit operating with the USDA to work with this Michigan Farmers Market Metrics Portal. This was launched in April of 2017, and is now a portal that houses all of the information that was once housed in those two Microsoft Excel workbooks in one place that looks like the portal dashboard to the left. So, it's operationalizing data collection for market managers, and the market managers have access to their data in real time to promote their farmers markets, increase vendor numbers, access future funding opportunities, and raise community awareness. So, this was, this came out of an idea to make it easier for, for markets as a whole to collect this information, and an easier way for us as an association to house all of the data we collect around farmers markets in one place, so that one day we can report at a state level, rather than just at community levels. So, this is another look at how markets can use the portal. These are infographics that can be used as one whole sheet, or used individually through social media or print. And they are, as you saw, sprinkled throughout the rest of this presentation, easy, user-friendly infographics that really depict a lot of information in one tiny little piece. So, you can report on sales, acres and production, employees at the market, and market managers have access to this through their, through their portal. So, the goal at the state level is to aggregate data statewide and be able to report to funders and understand the scope of Michigan farmers markets to report on job retention and creation, economic impact, agritourism, and food assistance in Michigan. Our future goals are to efficiently measure economic, officially measure impacts of Michigan farmers markets, standardize, standardize a method for data collection, standardizing the metrics we collect, and have markets independently collecting this information, have a common place to keep market data, help influence policy, and at one point have all Michigan farmers markets collecting data of some sort. As I said before, this was funded through a USDA business grant and specialty crop block grant. And then, all of the reports for all communities involved are on our website at Mifma.org-report. There's about a 12-page full report, and then a two-page summary report. Any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Commissioner Frazier?
No questions for you. It's a great thing you guys, your group does. It's unbelievable how much stuff they have. I'm glad they, they accept credit cards there, because I was worried when there, my daughter, she wanted to go for a bike ride one day. She goes, I want to go to the farmers market. So, I said, okay, we rode our bikes down there. It's a great opportunity to sell some people I knew, saw one of the farmers I know. I said, you're selling some eggs? She said, yeah, I just sold all the eggs. But, a lot of people, a lot of presentation and everything. And one of your vendors tried to give me cooking advice. I said, sorry, you're, talk to my daughter, don't talk to me. But, we got some good treats, and it was a great thing. We got done with the farmers market. I went to downtown lunch, so it's a great opportunity for everybody. for everybody.
Commissioner Ken Benz, Ken Benzey?
Well, I think the data collected was outstanding. We keep hearing that agriculture is growing in Michigan and will continue to grow, so it's kind of exciting to see what's happening locally with it. I know a few years ago, there was some tension with the farmer's market vendors, a few of them storefront owners, non-storefront owners. Is that better? Is it? No? Okay, good. It's good to hear.
And the one stat I reported on shows that the market benefits the entire community as a whole and not just the vendors at a farmer's market. If the farmer's market is drawing people to downtown, they are more than likely going to spend more money in businesses surrounding the market and in downtown as a whole.
Thank you, yes. No, it's just Saturday mornings are pleasant affair down at the Commons. And in every community, probably, it's, you know, it brings people in. And I do like, as Commissioner Ken Benzey said, you compile data. That's something that we should have on every event. I notice where you bring a million dollars into the community, that's pretty noteworthy. So...
A big number.
It is. Thank you very much. I think that would be it. We appreciate you coming here. We thank you very much and hope to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is when a resident can address the commission, something they wish to say, or they may reserve time to speak on a business item that we have coming up. I'm going to open public comment. You have three minutes to speak. We need name, address, city or township. Would anyone care to address the commission?
Yes. Hi, I'm Mary Lou Blomquist. I live at fifteen-thirty West Ridge, here in Marquette, at Torreville West. I came to bring to your attention what I think is a dangerous issue on the bike trail. And you gave me a good segue by mentioning going downtown on your bike. This is where the bike trail crosses Cleveland Avenue between Lincoln and McClellan. It's very near John Kivela's house, just beyond, down the hill from Torreville North. If you are driving west, going down that hill, there is no way you know there is a bike trail down there. There is a sign, it's covered by the leaves in a lilac bush, and I believe that a couple of years ago, that street was resurfaced and the, the lines were never, the crosswalk lines were never put back in. I went to the Parks and Recreation and brought this matter up, and he pulled up that street on the computer, and there were crosswalk lines. And he said that was an old picture, and I don't think the crosswalk lines have been put in since that street was resurfaced. And I, I am asking that you take a look at that, and I think it could be a very dangerous situation. And as those of us who are bikers know, there are stop signs on that trail, so the bikers are supposed to stop, but we know that if you have a good head of steam and you don't think there's a car coming, you just keep on going. My husband last year had a, a close encounter with a young woman, and it would be a shame if it were more dangerous than that. And when I drove by there two days ago, there were some new skid marks right near that intersection. So I'm asking that you assign the appropriate department to take a look at that, and hopefully we can avoid a tragedy in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the city, the police chief will take that up. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
I thought while I was here, I'd address a few things. And actually, it's a segue into both of the issues from tonight. One is, I would like to thank everyone that came out and supported the inaugural Classic Cars on Third.
Hey, Mona, tell us who you are.
Mona Lang, the executive director for the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. Anyway, Classic Cars on Third, we had a hundred-and-sixty-seven vehicles, and we worked with Tammy and Bill Duper, who owned the Third Base Bar, and they came to our staff and asked if we would help them with this event in memory of their daughter, who was a victim of domestic violence. And I'm proud to, to relay that they raised, we raised over twelve-thousand dollars at the event and in sponsorships for the Women's Center, and then another four-thousand of donations that they got that went directly to the Women's Center. So on Wednesday, we'll be making that presentation. And I think that is, that's a win-win situation, because it had certainly economic impact as an event, and also is going to be a much-needed funding for the Women's Center. So second thing I'd like to talk to you about is, if you haven't heard, the DDA is heading up a fundraiser for a piece of public art for Phil Namisto. Phil is going to be eighty-eight years old in October, and our goal is to have this installed prior to his, to his birthday. And to date, we've had great support. Eighty people in businesses have already contributed. So we've raised sixty-one-hundred of the ten thousand that we need for this project. The budget includes eight thousand for the actual art itself, for the sculpture, and another two thousand for interpretive signage. The, there is going to be a fundraiser at the Delph Bistro on the seventeenth of September from three to five. Tickets are ten dollars with all proceeds going to the project. And I just really believe that this is a piece of art, and it is a gift to the community, by the community. And I think it's an honor for a common man who brings out the best in all of us and really can show us that we can all make a difference in our community. And I would have gone on and on, but I'm running out of time. However, local artist Earl Sencheck has been chosen to do the project. He has been working on some castings. He said it's hard to nail Phil down, because he's always on the move. But the statue will be created with sustainable materials. It'll withstand inclement weather, and it will be interactive. It's going to sit on a bench in the Phil Namisto Pocket Park, which this commission named in January. And I think that it will be a great addition to our community, and it will really be something that not only the community, but visitors can enjoy. So I just wanted to kind of give you a quick update on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I thought I'd take the opportunity to stop by. I'm Jay Gage. I'm the new UP Regional Manager for Senator Debbie Stabino.
Jay, what's your address?
It's 301 North Fourth, and hopefully nobody says I'm male. Yeah, here in Marquette, absolutely. I'm very new to the community. I've lived here for about a month so far. I'm originally from, I don't want to say, you know, the best city in Michigan, but my heart is always going to be in Sioux State Marie, but I'm really enjoying and adapting well to the city of Marquette. So I've met a number of you folks, but I thought I'd come and introduce myself tonight. I did have the, the pleasure of meeting with City Manager Mike Angeli, and as far as city managers go, he does a fantastic job. Prior to moving to Marquette, I was the City Commissioner in Sioux State Marie, so I got to get my local government fix by coming down and, and seeing that all municipalities kind of operate just a little bit the same. So it's, it's a lot of fun. I appreciate just taking the time to address you, and I really have enjoyed becoming a member of this community. So, thanks so much.
Frank Gavero, 350 East Ridge. These are my opinions. We thank this board for investing in smart traffic lights, for moving the north flagpole at the beach, and for more roundabouts if they work as well as the existing one. Also, on July 31st, most members handled a garbage handling item diligently. The public likes the idea of choices, except this might confuse our residents and garbage handlers, and the bin option ruins many people's incentives to recycle. For those who select the bin option and still have green bags left, are we able to obtain refunds? Mr. Plord told us on July 31st that he'd check into this. Knowing this item involved the greatest public interest, it needed moving up on the agenda. The Chair is supposed to use his discretion. This issue has commonly arisen over the course of many Chairs, yet none responds as to why the items aren't moved up. They seem too lazy to modify the agenda. Mr. Frazier said emails regarding garbage handling, those he received, I assume, were a waste of time? Why a waste? Mr. Frazier is obsessed about wasting time. He called July 31st a waste of a meeting on such a nice day, minutes before a deluge. Oddly, a weather forecaster later reported that there'd been zero-point-zero-zero inches of rain in Marquette. Too many of Mr. Frazier's contributions come in the form of humor, some rather dry. He and Ms. Campenzi shared a laugh between themselves on July 31st. This job is too serious to goof around, especially with the public record being what it is. Later, Mr. Plord and Conley also laughed long and hard among themselves, though quietly, immediately after Ms. Reynolds mentioned being offered beer and food at Hiawatha. Why is that so hilarious? If they're laughing for that long during a public meeting, we'd like to know what's so funny. Otherwise, they're exercising bad manners. July 31st, a man drove ten miles to spur your interest in suicide prevention. Not one in seven had the decency to respond after all the awareness that slapped us in the face last spring. None of the promised awareness followed. Few even talk about it anymore. A guy staggered from side to side of the Third Street sidewalk one day. A city cop passed him, followed by a state cop, neither of whom stopped the check. They avoid these drunks like the rest of us, including this board. Our members neglect to discuss suicide, alcohol, and homelessness despite reminders outside this chamber and within. Mr. Plord told me that he received a reaction from residents after I referred to alcohol as a hard drug. Last spring, my assertion struck close to home. No, I don't have a crystal ball. Someone just needed to say it as it is to get six members on the stick, excluding the Chair, who's not even listening for anything he can use. The same negligence is true at Lighthouse Park, as yet another summer has slipped by with no action.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we adopt the consent agenda with item 7L added.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments, any? Commissioner Baldini?
I just have one comment. We're approving on the consent agenda the bond authorization resolution for the Peter White Public Library for four-million-two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars and its point-four-eighths, about approximately a half a mil for fifteen years. And I just wanted to remind people that it is a, it is a debt for the city, but it's a designated debt. In other words, we're going to use the millage that for fifteen years to pay it. There's been some discussion that maybe we don't know what we're doing in terms of debt, and where's the money coming from. But just to mention that, that's designated. Most of the debt that we do is line itemed in some specific item in the, in the budget. Not the budget, but in other sources. I just wanted to mention that, so thank you.
Thank you. And because that item is a resolution, we do need a roll call.
Because that item is a resolution, we need a roll call vote. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries seven-zero. Next, we move to unfinished business, of which we have two items. The first item is Land Development Code Advisory Committee Partial Appointment. City clerk, could we have the background on that, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. At its July 31, 2017 meeting, the City Commission passed a motion establishing a Land Development Code Advisory Committee to ensure meaningful public involvement in the Land Development Code project. The recommended and approved makeup of the committee was to include three members of the Planning Commission, one resident and former member of the zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, one development industry business owner, one architect or engineer from a locally-owned development industry business, two members of the City Commission. To this effect, four residents have volunteered and are being recommended for appointment. Joy Cardillo, Wayne Primo, and Aaron Andres are all seeking appointment as members of the Planning Commission. Ken Chapsky is seeking appointment and would fairly represent the seat defined for an architect from a locally-owned development industry business, as well as representing, representing the development industry business owner. All four members are seeking appointment and recommended to be appointed for terms starting September 5, 2017, and ending September 5, 2018. Additionally, it is recommended that the Mayor appoint two City Commissioners in order to represent the Commission's interest in this matter. The term of these appointments would also start on September 5, 2017, and end on September 5, 2018. Two members are still needed to complete the roster of this committee. One former member of the Board of Zoning Appeals and one development industry business owner or architect, engineer from a locally-owned development industry business. Fiscal effect, members of the Land Development Code Advisory Committee will serve in an unpaid volunteer status per City Code Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 1, Section 2-393. Minor clerical support will be supplied by the Community Development Staff. Recommendation, appoint Joy Cardillo, Wayne Primo, Ken Chapsky, and Aaron Andres to the two, and two City Commissioners to serve as full members of the Land Development Code Advisory Committee for a one-year period starting September 5, 2017, and ending September 5, 2018. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you make, someone makes the motion to accept this, would you please add to the recommendation that Mayor Protem Baldini and myself will be the two commission appointees? Okay? So now, will someone make a motion with that inclusion? Will someone make the motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we appoint Joy Cardillo, Wayne Primo, Kenneth Chapsky, Aaron Andres, and Mayor Campana, and Mayor Protem Baldini, to serve as full members of the Land Development Code Advisory Committee for a one-year period, starting September 5, 2017, and ending September 5, 2018.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments? Any? Commissioner Plord, anything?
This is, this is something that we've been doing for quite a while, and this is a culmination of putting this committee together, and we've got some really, really good candidates for this committee, in fact.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything? Commissioner Conley? Yes, no?
Quick question. Being, as this is an advisory committee, the City Commission, the remaining members of the committee, as they're appointed, will need to be city residents, is that correct?
That is correct. City residents.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Our next unfinished business item is the Superior Watershed Partnership, the lease. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Superior Watershed Partnership, SWP, has requested the City Commission consider renewing their lease for office space at 2 Peter White Drive, commonly known as the caretaker's dwelling at Prescott Park. In lieu of monetary rent, SWP will, shall be required to provide the city and/or its residents any combination of goods, services, and funds not less than fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two annually, which has been determined to be fair market value. This amount will increase three percent each year for a term of five years. Fiscal effect, rental proceeds of fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars in goods, services, or funds. Recommendation, approve the five-year lease agreement with Superior Watershed Partnership for office space at Prescott Park per the terms of the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I'd like to approve the five-year lease for Superior Watershed Partnership for office space at Prescott Park for the terms of the agreement.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Frazier, any? Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Just that the Superior Watershed Partnership continues to offer a good relationship with the city, and I'm glad that we can continue this relationship.
Commissioner Conley?
They've brought in more in grants than we charge in rent, so it's, it's a deal for everybody.
And they do many good projects for the city that benefit the city. Seeing no other comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries seven-zero. We have three new business items for the evening. The first, delegate to the Michigan Municipal League Convention. City clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. Each year, the Michigan Municipal League holds a meeting of its members, which includes the election of trustees voting on policy issues... includes the election of trustees voting on policy issues and other business. In accordance with Michigan Municipal League's bylaws, each member municipality is asked to appoint one official voting delegate and one official alternate voting delegate to represent the municipality at this annual meeting. The Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting will take place in Holland, September 13 to 15, 2017. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint one city delegate and one alternate to attend the 2017 Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Before we make this motion, could you add to the recommendation that I will be the delegate, and Commissioner Reynolds has graciously accepted to be the alternate? So would someone care to make the motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I will move that the delegates, that Mayor Campana and Commissioner Reynolds be our delegates to the 2017 Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
It's part.
Comments? Any?
No comments.
It's an administrative bookkeeping thing that occurs at our city meeting, easy to do. All right, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries 7-0. Our next new business item is the US 41 Water Main Extension. City clerk, could we have that background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the former Trailers Hough Hotel area is being redeveloped by the Veridia Group. This new development, Harbor Vista, will be a phased project and require an upgrade to the water and sanitary sewer services. Part of the agreement between the City of Marquette and the developer included the upgrade of the water and sanitary sewer services to the development by the City of Marquette. Payment for this construction would be reimbursed by the developer as the development is built out. The extension of the water main from Tonti Road to Cliff's Power Drive and to Lake Street will not only benefit the developer, but will benefit the City of Marquette with another water supply to South Marquette for emergency situations. Bids for this project were open on August 18, 2017. One bidder responded to our request for bids. Bids are summarized below. Engineers estimate $348,470. Overstar Inc., $450,165. Tabulation and checking of the bids found no errors. Fiscal effect, the cost for the US 41 Water Main Extension project will be reimbursed per the development agreement. Recommendation, award a contract for the US 41 Main Extension project to Overstar Inc. in the amount of $450,165 based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Alternatives, none. The city is obligated to perform in accordance with the development agreement.
Thank you. City manager, did you care to talk on this? Not our best contract we've ever had, but we can bypass it if you want. Maybe you can explain why?
Well, if you recall, we agreed or entered into a development agreement with Nordic Bay back a few months ago now, and with the idea that there would be a guaranteed $5 million initial investment on the part of the developer and potentially additional phases in that same amount. And that the increase in property values would translate into an increase of taxable value, and the extra or the new taxable value would be used to compensate or to pay off this debt. Originally, when we entered into this agreement, we had estimated the cost to be somewhat less than the actual bid, but I think it's fairly common and maybe even obvious that the market right now for this type of work is not in our favor. As you can see, normally, we end up with two or three bidders, and the bidding can be competitive, but in this case, I'm assuming or probably making a safe assumption that because of all the construction in the area, which I apologize for, the bidding just isn't there, and the costs are a little bit higher. And this, the increased cost is what it is, but we still anticipate being able to pay it off with the increased tax revenue.
Thank you. And of course, it does benefit other areas of the city, the south side of the city.
Right, this added water, additional water adds to the loop for the water in the Chyris Hills and Lake Shore Boulevard, or I'm sorry, Salt Lake Street area. It adds more water to our fire protection, as well as a benefit to the residential users.
Okay, we do need a motion here. Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we award a contract for the US 41 Water Main Extension project to Overstar Inc. in the amount of $450,165 based on the quantities and the unit price bid.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Plourd?
I second.
Comments?
I have a couple of comments. One, this was a project that we had in our capital, our long-term capital improvement that we were going to do because we needed to do it, and the speculation was by our engineering department, which really is quite accurate and comes in very close on bids, estimated this at being about $350,000. Well, we can see that the estimate is, the bid, only one bidder came in at 450. If you recall at our last meeting, we had three bids on a project, and two of them were just way, way above what our engineering department estimated, and somebody did come in at 142,000, I think on a 140,000 projection. So we're going to see more of this. You know, it's the good news, bad news sort of situation. The individual has committed, is moving forward with the building of his apartment complex, which everybody tells us we're short of apartments in the community, and so he is moving forward with it. Sure, I'd like to be able to do it at the 348,000 that was estimated to begin with, but I think we're going to continue to see more of this as time goes on. Last meeting, we saw it in bids, and we're seeing it again. There is just a lot of work going on, and that's the good news. And so I think it's a, still is a very good project for us, and he does have plans to add other units at that site.
Thank you. Commissioner Plourd, anything?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of other things that I think need to be pointed out. First of all, the Veridia Group is about as prestigious a group as we've seen in the city, and everybody in the city can see their work already. Another thing I think is very important to understand is that, as you mentioned, Mayor, this project is also affecting other areas in the city, and we cannot turn our back on those areas. Lake Street, Chyris Hills, this project is going to benefit them, as well as provide better fire protection in the City of Marquette for different areas, and that's very, very important as well. We may find that some types of insurances actually go down because of this project. As Mayor Protem Baldini mentioned, I also would love to be able to see a bid that came in at the engineer's estimate, 348,000, but there's also some price increases. I thank Mr. Verico, or Verito, for pointing out my improvement in math, as a matter of fact, when he points out that, yes, things do go up quickly as far as prices are concerned. Prices are not going down, and we could have probably and probably should have worked past this three or four months ago, and it might have been a lot cheaper. The other thing is, as Mayor Protem Baldini mentions and the city manager, Angelie, mentions, there's a lot of construction in the city, and that is a good thing. So I'm supportive of this, and again, remember, Lake Street and Chyris Hills are also benefiting in this.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
It's a good benefit to the area, good development to the developer, glad they're developing a rundown property. Also, good to find a local contractor to do the work, with all the contractors busy doing construction all over town, building traffic circles on every street corner that Mike wanted to do. It's just every contractor's busy doing everything, and I'm glad a local contractor is going to be able to help us and get the project done.
Thank you. Commissioner Campenzi?
It doesn't say on here, but where is the extra $100,000 going to come from for this project?
It would just be additional tax revenue from the developer. I think we had originally estimated maybe six or seven years to pay back through the increased tax revenue, and I'm assuming this extra 100 would probably add another two years onto that collection to pay the debt. The money is coming from a bond issue, so it'll just be used, the tax revenue will be used to pay off that bond, or paid towards that bond.
Okay, if it's coming from a bond, which I'm assuming all of this money is, just like the hospital project, we do have to pay interest on it, so it just makes the time period of paying this back longer, which I believe before it was up to about 10 or 12 years to pay it back. Now, I'm guessing it's going to be about 15, 16, maybe, maybe more, before we're at a break even for this project. Again, I think, you know, if the city was flush with money, if we had a lot of revenue coming in, if we weren't losing the We Energies project, I think we could partner with private business for this, but again, we can't afford to pave the streets of our residents without bonding for our projects. We've been raising our water rates almost to double digits every year. This year, we haven't, but I think we really need to look at our total debt and go cautiously into these partnership agreements. I can tell you, working for my dad in private business, that everyone wants a deal, and every private developer would love the city to help them with all of their infrastructure projects, but I think at a time when we have debt levels that the city has never seen before, I think we really need to be cautious, so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Baldini?
There's a difference in this project. He made a specific commitment to us by specific dates. It wasn't as if, put money in my property, and then I'll just turn it over and make more money. He said, by X date, I will begin this project, and he has. He's fulfilled his obligation. We are going to have to put this money into this water system at some point here. We know that. Somebody came along and provided an opportunity to do it now with the building of a $5 million project. I think it's a good win-win for the city, and if anybody else in the city wants to come to us and say, hey, if you put in a certain water project or sewer project, I will put in 5 or 10 million dollars in a new whatever, I think we have to look at that seriously, okay? And that's what the state does with the block grants that they have, with the brownfield type of programs. It becomes a win-win situation down the road. So I think it's one that we still are winning on it as a community.
Commissioner Conley?
I had reservations when we discussed the developers' agreement, but we voted for it. The City of Marquette made a deal, and we have to stand by it. It's more expensive to do that, but we made an agreement, and we can't back out at this point. So I'll vote, I'm going to, I have to support this contract for that reason. We voted, the majority of the commission voted for this agreement, and we were obligated to follow through.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Just to follow up what Commissioner Conley said, I wasn't present for this meeting, and I probably wouldn't have voted for it at the time, but now we're in an agreement, and we have to keep going forward, and that there's not an alternative. I do have two questions, probably for the city attorney, maybe the city manager. As far as the development agreement is concerned, is there some timeframe that we have to have this completed by?
I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I understand there is a time limit. I think it's this fall, but Dennis probably knows best.
The water line needs to be in conjunction with the development that's occurring, and Nordic Bay property has already received its zoning approval, and they're mobilizing on the site now.
Okay. The reason I asked is because, obviously, it came in with one bid, the possibility of rebidding if there was that time period, and that's why. So I pensively will be voting yes on this because it is a contract and it is a development agreement, but at the time, I would have voted no, but it still would have been 4-3. So it's not going to change anything here today.
Commissioner Campenzi?
Just one final comment. I do remember that the Brownfield had turned this project down, and their reason for that was that, one, it didn't have enough of a community benefit, but also they felt that this project would eventually be developed by the developer, and I know lots of people with private land that would love help getting utilities for it, including one, I believe, almost right across the street from this property. So again, I think this is what we run into when we go into these development agreements, and I don't think we have the credit line and the capacity right now to go into a lot of these agreements unless the return on investment is so unbelievable that we just can't turn it down. But again, I do believe the developer would have moved forward with this project in his own timeframe.
Commissioner Baldini?
Our credit line is good. Matter of fact, we still have a double-A rating even after we borrowed an additional 20-some million dollars for the Johnson control. So this line that our credit rating, our credit rating, let's be candid about what the other markets are saying about our city. The city's books are in good shape, our revenues are in good shape, and we have money to pay our bills. If you don't like a project because of philosophy, that's one thing, but it's not because of our credit rating. Sorry.
Commissioner Conley?
And we can take that excellent credit rating and ruin it if we welsh on a deal.
I like this agreement because it benefits not only the new development, but you know, potentially the one across the highway. It adds redundancy to South Marquette and improves water service to South Marquette, the homes that are down there right now, probably the prison, I would assume it benefits the prison. We have a $5 million project going in right now and plans for future. That is tax revenue, and it's going to be coming our way. That tax revenue, we'll be paying for this, so this is a good move on the city's part, so I will vote for it. Anyone else?
Seeing none? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed?
No.
That passes 6-1. Okay, our last new business item of the evening would be the Father Marquette Park Artist Selection. City clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. Background, the Beautification Committee of Marquette has partnered with the City of Marquette to provide the matching funds for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant to make accessibility improvements to the Father Marquette Park. As a part of this project, the Iron Ore Heritage Trail Recreation Authority agreed to provide $25,000 toward public art in the form of seating elements and a Lake Shore Boulevard entranceway. The total budget of this portion of the project is $30,000, with the remaining $5,000 coming out of the grant budget for seating areas. The city received nine submissions from many parts of the country in response to our requests for qualifications. The review panel consisted of Carol Fulcher, Iron Ore Heritage Trail, Barb Kelly, and Emily Lewis, Beautification Committee, Bill Saunders, Architect, Dorian Friend, Art and Culture Committee Beautification, Derek Christian, NMU Art and Design, Public Art Task Force. City staff included John Swenson and Tina Harris. On Wednesday, July 5, 2017, the review panel met and narrowed the selection to four candidates. On Wednesday, July 19, 2017, the panel conducted interviews via Skype at the NMU Art and Design Conference Room. The final score sheet for the artists interviewed is attached, along with the qualification submission of the recommended artist, Ryan Brayak out of Escanaba, Michigan. Fiscal effect, there are no city funds required with this action. Recommendation, approve Ryan Brayak as the artist for seating and entranceway public art for the Father Marquette Park Accessibility and Improvement Project in the amount of $30,000, and direct the city attorney to prepare a contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plourd?
I move that we approve Ryan Brayak as the artist for seating and entranceway public art for the Father Marquette Park Accessibility and Improvement Project in the amount of $30,000, and direct the city attorney to prepare a contract.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Plort, anything?
Just to say that it's, uh, there's so many people involved, and I'm really glad to see the energy put into this project, and this is gonna be a very interesting project to follow.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
More improvements to the Father Marquette Park, which everybody enjoys, and it's her history, and no city funds required, so it's great.
Anyone else? We will, big thank you to the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. They're coming up with $25,000, which greatly helps. Commissioner Conley, you have something?
I've had the pleasure of working with the majority of these, of the review panel in the Public Art Task Force, and they are committed to public art, and, and I trust their decision.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. We move to our second and last public comment of the evening. Again, a chance for residents to address the commission. I'm gonna open public comments. You have three minutes. Name, address, city or township. Anybody wish to address the commission at this point?
Frank Javerito, these are my opinions. August 14th, manager said there was no cover sheet for the fire code because this is purely a discussion. He wanted instruction on what direction to take. Explain that on a cover sheet, then, even if the code appeared in a previous packet. A cover sheet is needed for all items, so we're not fumbling through the long packets for items that aren't there, please. From the beginning of the discourse, it was apparent that another reading, if not a work session, was needed. The chair asked for a motion far too late, wasting at least 15 minutes spent conferring on what will only be repeated during the ensuing discussion. We've again seen candidates shoot in based on name recognition, similarly to the pharmacist, which in his case has not translated to serving on a board. The majority of our members are not elected on their qualifications to perform the job. Therefore, the least known man, who's the most forward thinker, received the fewest votes for a board that's in such sick need of visionaries. More residents are upset over the cutting at South Beach Park. The island of trees was gorgeous and served as an awesome buffer between the lake and bluff. It added character to the park unlike the openness we see there today. That mentality is so stupid to obliterate a natural resource just because someone misused it or a handful of selfish families sought an unobstructed view of Lake Superior. The chair called those junk trees. How can something so beautiful be junk? He mentions only the class of trees with no conception of the value of a small ecosystem that was needlessly stolen from a public park with no public opportunity, at a waste of $4,500. July 31st, the chair neglected to address my allegation that he's quick to cite someone for an error and he fails to address over 90% of the nastier allegations that he has no answers for. He only addresses the items that make him feel comfortable or that enhance his agenda or image, never the nastier allegations. This gutlessness explains why we've gotten nowhere in 20 years. Other reasons are the many people who love to complain on the outside but don't speak up, and board members who have no conception of the value of our natural treasures. A tourism board sells Marquette using the motto, "Embrace your natural identity," all while this city is led and managed by those who too rarely exhibit natural identities. I'll likely be dead in 20 years. We have enough woodland to last that long, so I'm not clearly doing this, so I, so I am clearly doing this for younger people who deserve as beautiful a lake shore as I found upon moving to this area of rare natural beauty in 1992. Those in charge don't seem to realize what we have, much less what's at stake.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna move to comments from the commission. Commissioner Reynolds, would you go first, please?
Yeah, I got a couple things. I sent out an email this past week, well, actually, I sent it out last week, but it got returned because we had the email problems. You guys probably got it today because I had to resend it. And it was an issue that, um, that was brought up to me by a resident with short-term rentals. So, what I'm asking is that, I'm hoping that a few of you, well, actually, it has to be four of you, look into this, as I am, and ask the city manager to direct the planning commission to look in it further. In this particular email, this individual, I know the word grandfathered in is not the right term, but that's the term that I'm using because that's the term we continue to use as we talked about it. But he was told that his short-term rental was accepted and in, and now he's being told that it's not because it's part of a triplex behind Black Rocks, which I don't think was the intention of this commission when we passed this ordinance. So, I'm asking that you guys take a look at it. I think that people relied on this, and particularly, he had his fire inspection, all the things right, and he's coming to me and saying he could just not register it, he could just keep going and not, but he's asking me to ask the commission to look into it further. The only other thing I have is that Dave was out of town, so I got to do Classic Cars on Third, and I get out the mayor's award, which was this beautiful 1950s UTE truck that was from Australia. So, I was very thankful for that, and I, it was so many people on Classic Cars on Third for an event that I didn't even have a whole bunch of knowledge about beforehand. I, I would say we saw about 3,000 people walking up and down the street because I was there for three hours with my daughter, and it was a lot of fun. So, I hope that that event continues in the future. I did tell that to Manna, and that's when, it is now in our budget this season that they're asking for more money for that, or fee relief. So, that is all I have for this evening, and thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Plort?
I just want to thank Mr. Verito for showing the viewers that we do take these meetings much more seriously than he does. We never do fumble through any of our information. We study that information, and we come to the meeting prepared to make a legitimate and acknowledged vote, an intelligent vote. We don't, and also, we are very, very concerned, really concerned about the budget. We, Commissioner Ken Benzey, Commissioner Frazier, Commissioner Conley, and myself are at all three budget meetings that we've held so far. Mr. Verito, you haven't been at one of them. Interesting. That could only cause me to conclude that you really don't care about the budget or how we're spending money. You just want to do antics in front of the TV crowd. Okay, that's fine. It's your, it's your right to do that. I'll take you about as seriously as that. As far as the humor that we share on the panel here, I'd be glad to explain it to you, but I don't think you're capable of understanding it, and so I'm not gonna bother. Also, I want to mention this today, that the Blues Fest is coming up this weekend. It's gonna be a magnificent fest. It always is. I've been to it many times myself. If you are a music lover but you don't know the blues, I really urge you to attend Friday night. It's a free concert sponsored by several of our area businesses. It's gonna be magnificent down there. And really, really look at going on Saturday and Sunday as well, because the blues, all American music comes from the blues. If you believe the blues is only sad music, you really need to go. I can tell you this, and I can see people already know about this already here in the meeting room. Friday night, it's gonna be rocking and rolling at Lower Harbor Park. Unfortunately, I will not be there because I have to work. Otherwise, I would be there, and I'd be first in line. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
Thank you. That's a great introduction to the Blues Fest, which is, which caps the end of a great summer. The only other thing I'd like to ask is that the city manager just give us a brief update on the roundabouts and progress on that and completion when he gets to his remarks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I don't have anything other than to wish my colleagues and staff and our community a very safe and relaxing Labor Day weekend. I know I'm looking forward to it. Seems like summer kinda came and went, so that extra day will be well worth it, especially with school starting the following week.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, where did summer go, Commissioner Benzey? Was summer here? I know we had like a month of it in July and maybe early August, but I just came back from a quick trip to Door County where I enjoyed the, I enjoyed outdoor scenery, just, you know, some people say that don't, I say wasted, I said wasted meeting because we are dealing with waste. So, no city meeting is ever wasting. It's just a waste of a nice day. I enjoyed to be outside enjoying your scenery, enjoying Prescott, you know. I went to Door County, and we went to a place that's like a Prescott Park on steroids. Very beautiful, rocks, everything, jump off the rocks and rock statues everywhere. What you notice, they don't have the life saving equipment like our life saving people have. You know, at Prescott Park and the Father Marquette, you know, there's all, out in the community, there's no nearby emergency services. I'm surprised they didn't have any rescue equipment like we have at our beaches that have, you know, just in case somebody falls in, or there's a lot of swimming, and it's open to the water, which is surprised. So, again, should be happy Labor Day and should be excited. Who's gonna, who's gonna be, so if I don't get to the concert, you'll be playing music over your radio station then, so I can listen to music on your radio station then, or what?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, picking up on the, on the theme here about music, we had the Fourth of July with music. We had the Harbor Fest this weekend with some great music, and now we're gonna have the Blues Festival. And it really is becoming lot, the music is beginning to attract a lot of people to the Matson Park. Socialization, but also the music is, is a real attraction. The Phil Nemestow Project is moving forward. I'm quite certain they'll get all the money they need. I've asked the city manager to check into with the arborist about some of the trees down there, I think could use some trimming. Thank you. And the Airbnb, if you recall when we were discussing, I still contend that it was, we had a solution in pursuit of no problem. Or, and, but some hotel people were concerned about it. Well, our Airbnbs are still in business, and as I understand, we were the second highest hotel rates in Michigan for the fourth, third highest in the Midwest in the fourth, and I understand that for Labor Day, there are no rooms in our hotels, which is good news. So, but I, I, I do worry that the Airbnb, that we, we treat that with some, making sure people do understand and get fairness on that. This weekend, we have the Blues Festival, and we also have, which run is it? Right, on Third Street. That, that's a very big one. I don't know how many people have signed up for that already, but it's always a big one, so. And so, the town has been busy and will continue to be busy. So, thank you.
Yes, those two events this weekend bring a lot of people into town. We're happy they're here and see what we have, and always glad to have them here. This Wednesday at 5:15 is our last budget meeting of the year. It's open to the public. Anybody can come. We'd like to see more public there. That's probably one of the more important functions of our city government, which is where the money goes, how we spend it. September 9th, the weekend of September 9th will be the Beer Fest. That's in Lower Harbor. Brings a lot of people in. It's a good time. We look forward to that event. As far, oh, Phil Nemestow. There is a GoFundMe page out there for Phil. I would encourage residents, you know, this is a guy who has been dedicated to the city of Marquette all his life. He really doesn't go anywhere. He doesn't do, he doesn't have a whole lot, but he, he really is taking care of our city. I mean, the flowers, the windows, being a pleasant person whenever you see him downtown. He deserves something. The man is 88 years old. I'd love to see this statue get done soon, this summer. So, please, you know, think about donating a little something for the Phil Nemestow memorials, or for Phil Nemestow statue. Commissioner Reynolds, I think we will, we will address the Airbnb. I will take it up with the city manager. We can't do it now, but we'll, we'll get the thoughts of the different other commissioners, and we'll try to take care of this. And this being the holiday, if you're, hopefully, you're not leaving town, but if you do, please drive safely. City Manager, anything?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for all your support tonight. I, it was commented that our emails were down last week, and I will apologize for that. We, we transferred or migrated over to a new website on Wednesday, and a lot of our emails took a while to, to migrate as well. So, but I have to tell you, that was the nicest two and a half days I've had. I mean, it brought me back to the 80s when, when we didn't have emails, and we just kinda talked to each other when we needed to. With that said, our, the city of Marquette has, has a new email, or I'm sorry, new website. Marquette, spelled out, M-I dot gov. We, we've changed our domain from dot org to dot gov, as will our email addresses be changing as well. I'm going to ask Dennis to make a few comments about the roundabouts and the construction. And then, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like Chief Rebo just to comment briefly on the Marquette Marathon for this weekend.
Five roundabouts being in construction, so help me out geographically which specific one you wanted an update on.
Well, I was just general, how are they going? Are we?
So, all of them, all the projects?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Actually, aren't there six? Three by the hospital on Wright, Sugarhoff and Wright Street, too?
Sure, sure. We'll start with the DLP Hospital MDOT project. We are still trucking away at that despite a very rainy summer and a lot of lost days. Due to construction, contractors get lost days by MDOT standards. It looks like we still can finish that this year. We will be paving past the October 15th deadline, but our contractor has agreed to the five-year standard pavement warranty on that. So, that will be done this year, looking towards the second half of October, November. On the Wright Street Roundabouts and those project, that project, you'll note that, I believe, one side of it was completed, and now we're open on the second side, so we're doing good there. We've had a lot of coordination with Northern Michigan University, of course, with, with students coming back. We want to be a little bit careful there, but that's not too much of a surprise. We knew that wasn't gonna be completed in time for students to come back. But that is on track to be done this year, as well as the one at Press, or at Fair and Prescott, Fourth Street there. That is why we had to close down the intersection for a week, and we caught some flack for that. But that was so we could play catch-up and, and get some work done on that one, so. No, nothing major to report at this point in time, that it looks like all of these things should be done before the snow hits, unless we get snow on October 15th.
Chief?
Just a couple things I wanted to discuss on the Marquette Marathon with the construction of the roundabout at Prescott and Fair. We've worked with engineering to develop a detour for traffic with the marathon coming up Third Street. So, we're just encouraging the public to be aware of that. We do have a cross-street, which is gonna be manned by additional police staff on Third Street near Magnetic, that intersection where we'll be letting traffic go across Third Street. So, just to the public, we're just trying to get out that information to just really be aware of the marathon going on. It is a Boston qualifier, so the, the track or the course couldn't be really altered due to the, the measurements and the distance. So, we're just asking the public to work with us on this event. It's a great event. We're really looking forward to it. We've worked with staff, engineering, to try to develop the best plan, but it's gonna be busy that time of the day, especially in that area, so.
Thank you. City Manager, anything else?
We are adjourned.